Here we are.
You ready? You have the recording on?
I'm sorry? Yeah, Mom, I'm good.
Come here, ma'am.
Right here. Shelton will be here too.
Oh gee.
Good evening, I'd like to call the general committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish. Guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first and help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them in this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things we pray in your name, amen.
Ms. Lemoine, would you lead us in the prayers, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay?
Ms. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. England?
Yeah.
Ms. Isart?
Here.
Stallone?
Huh.
Mr. Smith is not with us. Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White is not with us.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. First item on the agenda are the committee assignments in any folder. Fellow board members, there are the committee assignments. If you'd like any changes before the regular monthly meeting, please let me know. And if not, we'll adopt these committees at the regular board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item, the super news, Ms. Schneider.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. So in your folders for tonight, we're gonna do, I'm gonna go over something a little bit different before we get into super news, which is a really exciting and special addition tonight as we are featuring our Students of the Year. But before we do that, I did wanna quickly talk with you all. It is the spring, and always in the spring, we look forward to our celebrating our school-community banquet. This year, given everything with COVID, will look a little bit different. And so in your folders, you have the planned draft of how we're gonna move forward. It is gonna be a virtual ceremony that is gonna be prerecorded. And I just wanna quickly thank Fred A. Bear, Charles Kassar, Cindy England, Barry Lemoine, all came together to kind of devise this plan. And I, given all of the circumstances, think this is gonna be a really beautiful way to highlight not only these students, both from this year and from last year, but also the schools. And so ultimately, what is gonna happen is, at the end of April, when we would typically have our banquet, we will have two evenings of prerecorded ceremonies. One will be all elementary, the seven elementary, and the other evening will be our secondary, which is gonna include our three middle schools, Raleigh Alternative, Chalmitt High, and our central office recipients. We really thought about how best to capture those recipients in a way that would be really meaningful for the kids and the families, but also our schools. And typically, our banquet, we recognize these folks by category, all of our Students of the Year, all of our Teachers of the Year. This year, to kind of keep our pods whole and to limit how many people are in one space, but also to be able to feature the schools, we'll be doing this by school location. And so we were gonna start that filming process in the beginning of March, and I'm about to hand out a sign-up sheet. But what is essentially gonna happen is that each of our school locations, the recipients of this year's awards and last year's awards will come to campus. It will be after school. We'll have the plaques ready to go. And board members alongside school administrators are going to award those recipients at that time. We'll record those. And then on April, I believe we have it on here as April 8th, and we will do kind of the ceremony component with Ms. Votchay and Ms. Lametta and board members onstage. That is gonna look a bit similar to what you saw for graduation, kind of the pomp and circumstance of a ceremony. And then each of those schools will be featured on their own. So what I am gonna do is quickly hand out a sign-up sheet, and I'm gonna start with Ms. Acevedo. And we have the 12 schools, obviously, central office. If each of you would mind signing up for two, that would be wonderful. You'd be on school location for those two at the time specified on the sign-up sheet. And then Barry, Jack, or myself will kind of walk you through that. Principals are handling all of the communications to the recipients from last year and this year, but it should be a really special little package for each of them. So I'm gonna hand this out along, oh yes, Mr. England. Yes, so I think I, when I printed this, I must not have changed that date. That was brought to my attention on the sign-up sheets, that was changed.
Okay.
So we changed the dates that the board members will be at the LSBA conference to accommodate that.
Okay.
Okay, so when you see the sign-up sheet, that's been taken care of.
All right.
And thank you for pointing that out.
That's all right.
Sign up for your preferences, even if, you know, we're gonna ask two from.
To, for you to choose two different schools. If we have more than we needed one, then we'll massage that a little bit and talk with you.
Sure.
So give us your two preferences on there, regardless of who has signed up prior to you, okay?
Okay.
The other thing we're really excited about this year, for the 2021 calendar year, and Mr. England is going to debut our first one tonight, is gonna be a school board spotlight, which we're gonna feature for each of the super newses. And so that is going to be an opportunity for you guys just to be spotlighted. Barry and Jack in the back will help me orchestrate that with you, and we'll kind of partner you with super newses that might make the most sense, given your interest in all of that. Mr. England will be introducing our Students of the Year in tonight's super news, since he joins us every year for that. And so we're really excited about that. Now, I have a sign-up for that as well. If you'd like to participate in that, you can just go ahead and sign up for that too, which is in the packet, okay? So I'll hand this out. If you guys don't mind signing up, we, I'm gonna throw this back to Barry and Jack, who are going to do this month's edition of super news, which highlights all of our Students of the Year.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
Hello, I'm Cliff England, Vice President of the St. Benoit Parish School Board. For the last several years, I had the privilege of serving on the Student of the Year Selection Committee, which brings together the very best and the brightest students in our district. These outstanding young people represent all that is good in our public schools, and each is a great ambassador in and out of the classroom. So today, on this very special edition of super news, it's my honor to present our 11 Students of the Year. Let's meet them now.
I believe that the Student of the Year should be a hard worker, someone like me who strives to do their best and never gives up when things go wrong. A Student of the Year should be a leader, someone who is motivated and positive to inspire others. These are qualities that I possess in and outside of school.
They would have to be nice, they would have to be smart, and they would have to be funny in a charming way.
I am very intelligent, I am very kind to other students, and I like to help, and I'm very helpful to my teachers and my friends and any other student that needs help.
I think they picked me to be Student of the Year because I'm nice and I help a lot. And most of my teachers really say that I'm smart.
I think I was chosen not only for my GPA, because I have been maintaining a 4.0 GPA since kindergarten, also because I think I was very unique in the interview for Student of the Year.
Because I'm nice, kind, and I care about others, and I get real good grades, and I'm nice to everyone around me.
That's a hard one, because I think there's a lot of really strong seniors in my class, and it would, and I think it was a really strong competition. But as far as why I think I got it, I think I'm kind of a good representation of all what Chalmitt High has to offer. You know, I'm involved in sports, but that's not really just my main thing. I take my schoolwork very seriously, and I'm involved in a number of clubs with a number of leadership positions. And I think that well-roundedness is a prime example of like Chalmitt High and what we stand for.
Well, my favorite subject in school would probably be math. I just enjoy it because I feel like that's the one that I understand the most. Other than that, if I had another contender under, it would probably be ELA, because I'm able to just read whatever I want and read a lot of cool things that I like.
My favorite subject is science, because I like experimenting and going through trial and error, because I always, at the end, will be able to get it right.
To say my favorite subject is English, which I know is kind of a basic answer, but I think definitely the English teachers at Chalmitt High have kind of molded me to be that way. I've always loved writing, and I have a really, reading is one of my like biggest hobbies. And I think the, between the awesome English teachers at Chalmitt High and the great curriculums we have, I've really like, find my, found my niche in the English department.
My favorite subject would probably be science, because I get to learn a lot more things. Like currently in school, we are learning about the space and planets, which I really like.
My favorite subject could have to be math, because it challenges me, but also it's really, really fun. And all like the math problems, like all my worksheets, they like talk about like people, and they really fun, like different things that challenge me.
My mom used to be a teacher, so she taught me a lot of math tricks. And I just, I just get stuff really quick, 'cause learning the material, for some reason, I just process it really fast, and I just learn it really quick.
I think the teachers are important, because without them, we wouldn't really know much. And they like really help us a lot.
They help get you through what, um, the grades. They help you move on, so you can make, so you can have a good job and you can succeed in life. They help you with that, that's their job.
First of all, I think they get a lot less credit than what credits do. But I think teachers are really important, because they have a certain responsibility to literally foster the next generation. They literally have us for eight hours, and on a normal year, five days a week. And they're given the responsibility to foster the next generation of workers, politicians, doctors. You know, you don't know who's in your classroom or where they come from. But for those eight hours of the day, you have them and are responsible for teaching them, not just the curriculum or for the LEAP test or for their AP test, but just for life.
They teach you about lots of stuff, I mean, it's in their name. And um, if you don't have teachers, you wanna be able to get a good job.
I really hope that I become a registered nurse and get into LSU. And I also wanted to be a softball coach for little kids that could share my talent with them.
My mom has been an optometrist, and so I'm hoping that she can help me go through the basics of it. And she's gotten me interested in it. And the way she talks about it, you know, it just seems like a perfect job.
I hope I get an engineer job. I'm hoping to be successful at that job and eventually grow on it and make, probably make my own business or something. But I hope I can grow in the engineering, I guess, platform and eventually go on and be a good, really good engineer.
My hope is to be a meteorologist, because when you watch it on TV, you get, you see people go out and find tornadoes and hurricanes, and some people stand in it, and it seems really fun to do.
In my future, I'm hoping I can become an aeronautical engineer and fly planes in my free time.
I'm hoping that I can get into college and become a doctor, because I really, really like to help people. I feel like doctors really help people a lot.
You would be able to achieve your dreams if you really work hard and believe in yourself.
And today's forecast will be a lot of sunshine. It's gonna be really cooled out, so wear anything that keeps you warm.
My favorite thing about being a student at Lacoste is the people around me, because they get to do things I get to. And they're really fun people and positive people that are in my life, so I'm really happy to be there with them.
I play music in school, I'm part of band. That's a class that I have to take and also, but clubs I chose to join were jazz band, guitar club. And out of school, I play many instruments, the bass, ukulele, drums, guitar, and piano.
I read books for a variety of different reasons. If they have a certain subject that I wanna read about, I'll read a non-fiction book. And if they're, and if I'm just reading for fun, I might read a realistic fiction book or just a fiction book.
My mom always says, if you have a book, then you'll never be alone.
My advice to a younger student who's coming to Gojai would be to never give up, always be positive and happy. And it's okay if you get a grade lower than A or B.
It's okay to feel nervous, as long as you ask questions when you need to, and you make sure you get good grades and pay attention, you'll do fine in the end.
Honestly, just please try and be relaxed and try not to just stand out and attract attention, because, you know, no one wants that, 'cause people are there to learn. And you know, you can make jokes, but that's for recess and for lunch. So just try, don't try and act like you're bigger than yourself, 'cause again, we're only in middle school.
In middle school, I would say the best thing to do is to not think anything's easy. It's, it's always will be challenging. And to listen to your teachers, because even though you talk about something for 10 minutes, that 10-minute conversation will have to come and play for the test. And you have to be ready. And it's a lot of, it's a lot of work compared to Chalmitt Elementary or any elementary.
I think it's really something more about being a part of like the culture of the school. It's a lot more than just going to the school there. I recently was talking to someone, and I was talking about how one of my most memorable like memories from Chalmitt High is going to see a play, the CHSLI play with Bo, my little brother. And like, it was like a weird sense of pride for something that I wasn't even involved and I had nothing to do with CHSLI. But it was very exciting to be like, wow, like my school is like putting on this level of performances. And I think being a part of something bigger than that, like where I can take pride in something that I'm not even involved in, is I think something that a lot of students at Chalmitt High have, and I think that's what's really special about going there.
We're all one school and we're all one family. That's a message I hear on a daily basis.
We also like to congratulate our three district-wide winners. We are proud of you, and we know that you will represent us well. Congratulations to you all, and thanks to all of our teachers and staff who help our students each day. And we'll see you next month on super news, where we always let the super news roll.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider, and we have some comments, Mr. England.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Isart. Alex, it was been a pleasure for the last few years, you know, doing the judging for these talented young individuals. And this is the people that make our school system shine. And they're all winners, even though we had the district finals, they all winners. And so I just wanna congratulate them all. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just wanna congratulate all of our Students of the Year. It's just amazing, every year, these young students, how wonderful they are. And you know, they're, they have been chosen as Student of the Year, and there's so many other students who so close to them. And I know many of the schools had so many nominations. And it's just wonderful to see our next generation, how progressive and intelligent and sincere and, you know, their causes and their, you know, that they have, and the way they see the world is just wonderful. So I think we're gonna be in good hands in the future, and congratulations to all the Students of the Year. Anyone else?
Yeah, the only thing else I wanna say too, it's a hard decision too. You know, they were so close, and I wish there's one of my chances, a little bit more. And that's, with all the judges, I just wanna thank all the judges that come each and every year also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. England. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Always refreshing to see. Next item is an education item, Ms. Lemoine.
Thank you, Ms. Isart. Okay, agenda item number six is a presentation of the Posse Scholars. And I think we have Mr. David Bellard with us tonight to present. Welcome, Mr. Bellard.
Let me, let me just start by saying, Mr. Bellard is one of those excellent English teachers at Chalmitt High School that Emma just, and he has just referred to, has been a tremendous asset at the school, and has taken over and have ownership of this Posse program. And I'm gonna let him tell you about it, because he's the person who lives and breathes it as most, is closest to it. But I do want to say a heartfelt thanks to him, because I don't think our students would have been as successful as they are within the program had it not been for his leadership, his guidance over these past several years. So I do wanna congratulate Mr. Bellard.
Well, thank you.
As we ask him to tell you a little bit about the program and his participation and the students who are here with us tonight.
Okay, I won't, I won't take up too much of your time. So what Posse is, it is a four-year, full-tuition, leadership, and merit-based scholarship that is in 10 cities around the country. New Orleans is one. New Orleans Posse partners with five universities, Villanova University, Case Western Reserve University, Notre Dame University, Villanova, and, where am I?
Glade, where am I? Two, one.
Illinois Wesleyan.
Illinois Wesleyan. I know. And Chalmitt, so the scholarship draws almost 800 applicants from around the metro New Orleans area. And of those 800, only 50 are awarded scholarships. So each school, each of those universities accepts 10 scholars that they're giving those scholarships to. And then from that moment through, all the way through graduation, they receive ongoing support. So you have students who are graduating at over a 90% rate from some of the country's most prestigious and hardest schools. The process itself is really grueling. They go through three rounds of interviews, group interviews, individual interviews, and finalist interviews. And then, so what you see for us is our five Posse scholars. So I think it'd be best if I recognized them. So for Illinois Wesleyan, we have Melanie Corral.
Melanie, Melanie, stand up and talk to Mr. Bellard.
And Angel Lee.
And Angel.
At Case Western Reserve, Kina Bowie. Jadel LaFuentes. And at Villanova University, Ariana Rojas. She's also just been accepted into the College of Engineering at Villanova, so. So Chalmitt High, I've been, really had the privilege to work with these young people and have been doing so since 2015. We've been very successful with it. Since 2015, we have placed at least one student in a Posse. Last year, we had five, and this year, we have five. So we're very proud of all of them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bellard, for coming tonight to present. First and foremost, congratulations to all of the recipients of the Posse Scholarship this year. You all have demonstrated excellence at Chalmitt High and in your own community, and we are so proud that, like Mr. England always says, now you're gonna go out into the world and really, really shine. So we are so incredibly proud of how hard you have worked, and we know it's been an arduous process for you to reach this level. So congratulations. And to you, Mr. Bellard, like you said, you know, you have a legacy of doing this, and really, your tenacity and your commitment to this program and to the students at Chalmitt High in the classroom as an English teacher, but you know, especially with the Posse program, is just outstanding. So we owe you a debt of gratitude for all that you have done.
I appreciate that, but it's really a team effort. It really is.
Any comments from board members, from Votchay?
Before we do that, let me just say, you know, the origin of Posse, from what I understand, it started where a young man was going to college, didn't do as well as he should have. You, you guys out there know what it is. You're shaking your head. Would one of you wanna come up and explain that? Come on up. And tell them how this originated, and maybe where you were a little while ago in one of those sessions. Introduce yourself first to us again.
Okay, so hi, I'm Angel Lee. This is only my second year at Chalmitt, and I'm a senior. I was at Belchase for my freshman and sophomore year before this. So I wasn't expecting to just do like so well at a school that like I really didn't know everybody. And like, I was just afraid that I was gonna struggle, 'cause I didn't know the coursework, I didn't know the teachers. But thanks to Mr. Bellard, like he really, really helped me out. And like he, if anything, he helped me like see the best side of myself. But as far as Posse goes, it is, like Mr. Bellard said, it's a leadership-based merit scholarship, and it's a foundation. So it all started with this man who dropped out of college, and he wasn't doing so well. And he said that I never would have dropped out if I had my Posse. So like, you know, when you think of Posse, you think of your friends. Like this right here could be a Posse if you really wanted it to be, because you are all a group, you all do teamwork effort. So my Posse has Melanie, and then Kina and Jadel, they have their Posse at Case Western. And Ariana has her own at Villanova. So basically, they put us with these nine other students, and we all go to the same college, and we support each other. And while we are at the college, like on campus, we also have like one-on-one, one-on-one meetings, like the support doesn't stop anywhere. Like we're gonna have it for pretty much the rest of our lives, and I'm extremely grateful.
And where were you earlier this evening? Weren't y'all in a meeting?
Oh yes, we actually have these PCT meetings. They're called, they're, it stands for pre-collegiate training. So every Tuesday from 4:00 to 6:00, we have these meetings on Zoom calls, and we talk about, you know, like our leadership skills and basically just prepping us for like before we actually get to campus, so.
So it's a really good program, as they form that Posse of 10 students, that cohort of 10 students, with a lot of the preparation prior to going. These young people get to know each other very, very well. They are going to be supporting each other as they move on and go away from home, which is a really tough experience. And it's, while it's exciting and thrilling, it can present challenges. So they have people they can lean on, their activities while they're there for support. And as, you know, as she outlined, it is something that will support them through the entire four years. So while they're getting their tuition fully paid, they're participating in these activities in a program that are going to help them be persistent, to complete the program, and to go out in a world extremely prepared. So we're very, very proud of you. Thank you so much for coming up and doing that impromptu. You did a very, very nice job.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Isart? Just, just to say, we, we're just all very, very proud of each and every one of you, and we're very happy for you too. This is a wonderful opportunity, and congratulations and good luck to each and every one of you. And Mr. Bellard, we also thank you for going beyond and taking on this endeavor by directing the Posse scholarships and having so much success. We really do appreciate it. On behalf of the board, all of these students and the parents must be elated also. So congratulations to each and every one of you, and thank you, Mr. Bellard.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate you.
One question, how many of our students started in this process? That we had five then who actually received a Posse scholarship.
So if you don't mind, if I count real quickly?
Or approximate.
I think we have 40-something.
How many?
Who started?
Here we go.
Forty-two, I believe.
Forty-two, I believe.
We need you guys up here to answer these questions.
No.
Forty-two?
Forty-two, wait, of our, who have earned Posse Scholars?
No, no, for example, when you begin the process.
Okay, so when, when we begin the process, here at Chalmette High School, we have twenty, somewhere between 20 and 25 who began the process. And I think the other hit, really hidden remarkable thing is this year, we had 11 finalists. So we got down to 11 people. And I mean, just the sort of, the math is pretty incredible. Fifty out of 800 students, that's a 6% acceptance rate, and we had five, five of the 50. So 10% of those students in, who received Posse this year and last year are coming from St. Bernard Parish, Chalmette High School. You know, and the other thing that they don't like to toot their own horn, but each, each of those scholarships is worth almost $200,000 to them, and that's on top of, you know, all the other scholarship dollars that they're going to be getting, so.
So it's an incredible success rate, and we continue to do it each year. And I think the students who are actually becoming the finalists and the overall winners then contribute a lot to the younger people at Chalmette High School to prep them a little bit in how do you maneuver this process successfully. So congratulations to each and every one of you, and Mr. Bellard, just keep doing what you're doing.
We're trying. All right, thank y'all very much.
Okay, back to Ms. Isart.
Thank you, Ms. Lamourne, and thanks again, Mr. Bellard, and students, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. We know y'all have busy lives too, but we do appreciate you coming tonight and being recognized. Okay, next item is a.
Maybe we could just pause, maybe they could take a picture?
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would be nice.
Sure.
If y'all want to pause a few minutes, and we'll take the picture.
Okay. We are now back in session, and the next item on the agenda is the review of performance contracts and appointments. And before you, in your folder, you have a list of administrators who are up for a two-year renewal of their performance contract, which expires on June 30th of 2021, and their new contract will run through June 30th, 2023.
And again, this is just informational to you, just as personnel changes are. These are our 18 administrators who are up for renewal of their contracts. As I indicated to you, I intend to renew all 18 for a two-year period. I want to take this opportunity just to say, just as with our teachers, we have excellent administrators at our school sites who have done an incredible job this year in terms of furthering the education of our children in a very challenging environment. So I have put behind each one just a short clip, and asking you to return this to Shelby once the meeting is over. So again, just for informational purposes, I'll be renewing all the contracts of these 18 administrators.
Are there any questions? Mr. Long?
I'd just like to say, we are, we are so fortunate to have such great administrators and principals in our school system, and they have, they've always gone above and beyond, and again, we, we, we just, we appreciate all that they do, and we, again, we are so fortunate to have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Anyone else? Okay, ditto to what Mr. Long and Ms. Votche said. We are just very blessed to have so many dedicated and wonderful administrators along with our wonderful teaching staff and support personnel, but they each give of themselves every day for the students of St. Bernard Parish, and we are very fortunate. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next item, or personnel changes for February 2021.
Again, information as to what has transpired since our last meeting in terms of personnel changes. I'll answer any questions anyone might have.
Anyone, anyone have any questions about personal changes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item is an executive item, Ms. Long.
Okay, item, item non is a request permission to contract for reapportionment services. And Ms. Votche, I can't believe it's been 10 years since we've, we've done this.
I know, Ms. Long, it just seems like those 10 years keep getting, come quicker and quicker. So, as we know, as a result of each census, which has taken each 10 years, every public body in the country must take a look at their districts and reapportion based on population, whether it's a local governmental body, a state governmental body, or our national congressional districts. We have done this, obviously successfully, each 10-year period, and we always contract with a firm to crunch the numbers and take and work through the demographics and make sure that we are compliant, in compliance with each of our 11 school districts. Sometimes we, it, it is very, I say very important, that we and the parish council, the optimal thing would be to contract with the same firm, because as we know, our parish council has a different number of districts than the school board. However, we all cover eventually the entire parish. So as they put together their five districts, we're at the same time trying to do our 11 districts, and as you know, those people who have been with us a long time, we try to drastically reduce or eliminate splitting any precincts, because you want an entire precinct to be, hopefully, within the district. So when you're trying to apportion for five and 11 at the same time, you want to make sure the voters don't have to, if they live within the same precinct, vote for two different representatives. So the council has already contracted with Strategic Demographics. They did that at their last meeting. When we researched a little bit of background of the same company who approached us, Bill Blair, William Blair on here, who's a PhD, happens to be the state demographer. So as the state demographer, he does a lot of work with the legislature as they apportion and redistrict. So he's very, very cognizant of all the processes that are involved. And because he does so many around the state, as you can see, the cost of this contract, and I hate to say only, but it's only $16,000, unless we have to go to a pre-clearance. Right now, the federal courts have ruled that we no longer have to have a pre-clearance under the Voting Rights Act. If we have to do that, that would entail an additional $4,000. However, as it currently stands, unless they make a change somewhere within the next few months, we don't have to go through that extra process. When we did this 10 years ago, the cost of the contract 10 years ago, which I have in my hand right here, was $34,000. So we're looking at a contract right now, less than half of what we paid 10 years ago, with the advantage of having the same company do both power of government and the school board. So if there is any kind of adjustment that has to be made, then these people would be in contact both with the council and with our board. So with all of those factors taken into consideration, because the census numbers should begin to be coming out in April. So remember, it's going to be several months, once that happens, to where we get districts that we can feel confident about, then we'll, of course, go through a public hearing and formally adopt them by, you know, board prior to the next election. So with all of those factors in mind, I'd like to recommend that we contract with Strategic Demographics to complete the reapportionment and redistricting services as a result of the 10-year census.
Okay, I have Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Ms. Long. I just wanted to make a motion that we approve the administration's recommendation for reapportionment services to Strategic Demographics LLC.
I'm sure.
I have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any further discussion? Ms. Isart?
Ms. Votche, in the body of this letter, the owner, the managing member states that he's hired someone, a contractor with someone who is also a member of, of, is there any problem?
Uh, no, you're talking about the attorney that advises the LSBA. So LSBA is one of his clients, we would just be another client. The same attorney represents the Plaikman Council, actually. He also does work with St. Tammany School Board and School System, and they are going to be doing the reapportionment services for many of the school systems and local governmental bodies within the states, and that will be a part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I have a couple of questions, Ms. Votche. So this is something we don't have to go out for bids on, correct?
No, it's a professional services contract. Sometimes we go out for RFPs, but with the amount of money we're talking about, I'm confident we don't have to do that here. Now, if we were looking at a services contract that would be, you know, $100,000, $50,000, we may feel that it would be necessary to do that, but with one that we're looking at in this price range, I don't feel the need to do that. And by law, we are not bound to do it.
Okay, and the fact that this company has at least, what, 30 other jurisdictions, that you don't, you don't consider that going to be a problem in maybe having access to, to these, to his people?
No.
No?
Companies that we've dealt with before represent multiple agencies. You know, they've got these massive software programs that they're putting in. Their biggest time will be in meeting with us and taking a look at what these numbers are, and making sure that they are creating district lines that encompass, you know, the precincts and such. So it's, it'll be labor-intensive only in, I would think, the final steps, and I don't anticipate any problem with accessibility of these individuals.
Okay. And I see we have a resolution here, which we'll probably read into the minutes at the regular board meeting.
At the regular meeting.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Ms. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Isart. Item number 10 is a request for permission to advertise for bids for roof replacement at St. Bernard Middle. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, sir. We're coming to the board to request permission to advertise for the replacement roof at St. Bernard Middle School. As you recall, last year, due to the effects of Hurricane Zeta, the roof at St. Bernard Middle School was substantially damaged. Our insurance company sent out consultants to evaluate the roof, and they agree that the roof should be replaced. So we are asking permission to go out for competitive bids for the replacement of that roof. We hope to have the work begin immediately after the end of school and be done and completed over the summer so that it'll be ready for the beginning of school in the fall. So we just ask for your permission to release these advertisements and start the process.
Yes, sir. Mr. Campbell?
I would move at this time that we grant permission to advertise for the replacement of the roof at St. Bernard.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mrs. Esavedo. Any further discussion? Mrs. Jackson?
Did the, did the insurance company give an estimate as to what they felt that the cost would be?
Uh, they gave us, the consultants gave us a report with an estimate of costs. It's going to be, they're estimating over approximately, a little bit over a million dollars. It hasn't gone to the actual insurance company who told us what the actual proceeds are going to be yet, but they agree that it's a full replacement, and our architect agrees with them as to the damages that they specified.
So, so if it's well over a million dollars, is our deductible, is, is still above that?
A deductible, we will have a deductible. The deductible on our policy is $500,000 or 5% of the value of the building, which they're going to calculate and tell us. It'll probably be over $500,000. But then FEMA will step in, and we will get a majority of that from FEMA in funding. Now FEMA will only cover 75% of the cost, so there will be a portion that we'll have to cover, but the vast majority of the cost should be covered by insurance proceeds and FEMA.
So we're looking at just having to meet our deductible for now, and then we may get some of that back from FEMA.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Excuse me, I have one missed. In our policy, you know, sure, with the insurance company, is there any, take anything to depreciation?
Depreciation, depreciation does come into effect, but it shouldn't in this case. They come up with two values. They come up with a value of the damages and a value after depreciation. If we were just going to take the money and not do the repairs, then it would reduce it by a depreciation amount. But since we intend to repair the roof and replace it, then we'll be able to recover that depreciation from the insurance company.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Sure.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor.
Karen, and let me just, I was just trying to add something. Whatever is not covered, what we, we are going to have to pay, the majority of this, obviously, is going to be covered by insurance and by FEMA. So, but the small amount that we're going to have to cover, I just want to remind everybody out there that we have prepared for these kinds of issues by asking our community to approve that maintenance fund where we did that election, where we took former debt service, converted it to maintenance fund. So we have the funds that will cover this because of that forethought, you know, by the board and our community members. So this will not negatively impact anything in terms of operational expenses for our children. So this is a perfect example of one of the reasons why we ask the community to transfer that millage from debt service to set up this maintenance fund for our buildings.
Any other comments? Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mrs. Esavedo. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And move on to item number 11, request for permission to advertise for bid for bread. Mrs. Bloom, how are you today?
I am fine, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening to you.
We're asking.
We're asking to advertise, permission to advertise, for our yearly bread bid for next school year. And the advertisement is attached for our school nutrition programs.
Any questions, Mrs. Bloom?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we go out for bids.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mrs. Lemoine. This is a, out for bid for bread for 12 months, the next two years.
Yes, it is. 12 months is for the bread. Mm-hmm.
Without any further discussion, everybody, if you're in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Move on to item number 12, request for permission to bid for milk.
Yes. This is our yearly milk bid. The advertisement is attached in your review. We are asking permission to advertise for our milk for our child nutrition programs for next year.
Okay. Once again, this is a bid for a year, '21 and '22. Motion by Mrs. Lemoine, seconded by Mrs. Dyssart. Any other discussion?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we'll move on to item number 13, request for permission to advertise for bid for groceries.
Yes. And these are our food products that we'll be bidding. This is a six-month bid, as we usually do. So we will open the bid, and from July 1st until December 31st, this bid will be in effect. And that is the bid advertisement should be attached behind, permission to advertise for this, for our child nutrition programs.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mrs. Jackson. Any other discussion of the groceries? Mr. Long?
Ms. Bloom, I was just curious, why do we do separate bids for milk and bread, and then we do other food products? Is it?
Well, because milk is generally bid by a dairy, and those companies only have milk. And so that's the reason, those kind of vendors. The bread is usually procured by bakeries. And then, of course, the food products, we usually get our food products that are delivered to our schools from vendors, distributors, and of course, also from manufacturers of those foods. And that's the reason why they're separated. The milk also has a price escalation, which we put in our bid. Every month, we have in our bid contract what's called the price escalation. So the milk fat prices change month to month, and so this allows us to get the best prices for milk over a period of a year. And just to mention too, we do, you know, once a year, I always come to you and ask permission to advertise for the whole year of produce, of fresh produce. We do that at monthly because, as you know, produce fluctuates greatly by the season. And so trying to lump them all together would really be to our disadvantage. This is much better for us to deal with, you know, the prices that we want to get, and also, of course, the vendors are specific to those kinds of products.
Right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. England, seconded by Mrs. Jackson. Send this to the full board with a recommendation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mrs. Bloom, I just have one question for you.
Yeah.
We're still operating under the grant where we are providing all of our students a free lunch until eighth grade?
Well, this is what's happening this year. Because of COVID-19, we are not running the National School Lunch Program and the Breakfast Program. We are using the Summer Feeding Program. The federal government allowed us to extend the Summer Feeding Program for the whole school year. Usually, we do that in the summer where we have remediation or we have the STEM camp at the MoMA Center. But because of COVID, the flexibilities allow us to deliver to classrooms, feed all the children for free, and so all the children are getting free meals this year. But it's better for school systems, or our school system at least, to use the Summer Feeding mode because the flexibilities for the types of food that we need to serve are greater. And you know how it is, right now, sometimes it's hard to get some things that we may need to get. National School Lunch Program regulations are stricter, and the guidelines are stricter, like the sodium and the calorie limits are very strict. In Summer Feeding, they're much looser. And so sometimes, for instance, you know, for breakfast, we're doing grab and go at the schools. That means the children come through the line, or they get meals delivered to their classrooms. Well, we have to buy certain foods at a shelf-stable and safety, you know, food safe, and things that we can get from our vendors. So typically, the children would come through in a normal school year, they would come through and sit down, you know, get some food in the cafeteria, sit down and eat their breakfast. We could give them hot breakfast, like grits and eggs and oatmeal and things that are hot. But if children are bringing it to a classroom, it's not always possible to do that because of food safety issues, as well as, you know, the children carrying things, and there's so many things to think about with that. So this has allowed us to, you know, have more flexibility in what we had to do this year. As we move into next school year, we did apply for CEP. We should be able to have it. It's a four-year program. So this year should not be year one. Next year, for the new grant, would be year one, according to everything I've read so far. But as we get more information, I will let you know. So, because we're not even running National School Lunch Program this year, really, we're running the Summer Feeding, which is still the Child Nutrition Program, but it's a different program totally. The only school that should be using National School Lunch Program right now, Araby Elementary still has the After-Cal Program, and the children, the snack program, is a National School Lunch snack program because you can only have two meals a day in Summer Feeding. And so we didn't want to not have that program at the school. So we're kind of running a few different, a different, few different meal programs that, you know, in our school system right now. But it's working out.
However, I do want to comment that last spring, before COVID came to be, we were going to file the application for the four-year cycle in that CEP program.
Yes.
Where the high school as well was going to be on the free lunch this school year.
Yes.
So my anticipation is, when we file this spring for next year, that I know K-8 will be, still maintain that free, you know, free lunch and breakfast. And I am, I hate to put a percentage on it, but very confident that we are going to be able to squeeze the high school in there as well.
Right.
But until we crunch those numbers, which we'll probably do around April, April, May-ish, is that right, Ms. Bloom?
In April, yes.
April, then we'll know for sure. But it is our anticipation, we're definitely K-8 will be there, pre-K-8 will be there.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, we think the high school is well.
Yes, that would be great.
Mr. England?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. It's my understanding that if they want to get extra milk, anything extra, then they are charged, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Any program allows them to have one free breakfast and one free lunch, and then after that, they have to pay for it. We don't get any reimbursements for any extras that children buy.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the reason why.
And then they bill at the end of the month by the school itself to the parents?
Well, we do, we do. Most of the time, the children pay on the line. At high school, we have decided that it would be a good idea for the high school students, if they want to buy extra things, they buy it at that particular time, you know. So sometimes they want like an extra pizza or extra water or, you know, other things like that. But really and truly, at the middle school and elementary, we really don't have many extra sales because the children usually just take the whole meal and they get everything with it, you know, whatever they like.
I got to tell my neighbor.
Most of the time. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. And thank you, Ms. Bloom, for your service. You do a great job running our cafeterias and our nutritional program.
I appreciate it.
And you do an excellent job, and I just want to say thank you very much for your service.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Dyssart?
It's a pleasure, always.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, and thank you, Ms. Bloom.
You're welcome.
Ditto to Mr. Warner. I know for all of us.
Well, we're all looking forward to when we can have banquets and get together again and do all those kind of things, too. So hopefully, that'll change next year, and we'll have a nice, maybe, beginning of the year banquet, I hope. It'll be great.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bloom.
You're welcome.
We appreciate all you do and all of the cafeteria workers also.
They're great.
They do an awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item, superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Votchay.
I just want to comment, you know, as we all know, and we keep saying constantly, it's been a very challenging year. We're getting by day to day. We've got all the COVID issues that we're dealing with, and it's tough at the school site. It's tough for us, it's tough for everybody within their homes, their families, and communities. But it was really nice tonight to see a couple of items that we felt good about and can smile about and celebrate. Seeing all the students of the year, I think was a very uplifting video and gave us some real faith in what our young people are like, and we can see the future of what they can become. And then seeing those five posse scholarship winners, which, we just happened to highlight those five students tonight as posse scholars. We have many, 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 many of our students who are getting scholarships from all different sources, which we usually recognize, all of them in the month of May, once those scholarships are in. But it was very, very nice tonight to celebrate some positive academic achievements and some all-around achievements by our students. You know, and then, just having said that, realizing next week, we are going to be taking a break for the Mardi Gras holidays at our schools all week. So Friday, the 12th, will be their last day until our students return on Monday, February 22nd. But our 12-month employees and our offices will be open next Thursday and Friday, the 18th and 19th. But our school buildings will be closed. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. On behalf of the whole board, we want to wish everyone a very happy and safe Mardi Gras. Enjoy your week off to the teachers and students and all of our personnel. Okay. Happy Mardi Gras, guys. Anyone else?
Move with your.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Esaveto. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.